Good evening, everybody. It's five o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order. If you wouldn't mind, please join us for doing the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we do the roll, I want to welcome, we have three students here today from Eastview Cannon. Would you mind standing and telling everybody your name?
I'm Carolyn.
I'm Allison.
I'm LaMond Lindsay.
Okay, I imagine this is for your government?
Yep.
Class, okay. We want to make sure you get graduated this year, so, alright. Could you do the roll, please?
Councilmember Quonier.
Here.
Councilmember Sherling.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Bradley.
Here.
And Councilmember Sherman.
Is on his way.
Is on his way, yeah. He'll be here shortly. Okay, um, I talked to Tim.
Yeah, we'd like to reorder a couple items real quick. We'll put the agenda together. Item six point two, talk about the development agreement financing. It probably makes sense for us to move ahead of item five point two, which is adoption of resolution eighty-nine approving the development agreement with Eastern Iowa. So, we'll have the public hearing on the agreement, then we will talk about the financing, then we'll talk about the agreement resolution there. So, we had put it in this order originally because Maggie's doing the presentation of both of them.
Yeah, but we're gonna split it up just so people have that information beforehand, so, okay. So, we can go ahead and still do approval of the agenda then. Okay, as amended. Okay, I was wondering if I had to add that. Okay, so I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So, approve of the agenda.
Okay, motion by Linda, okay, and second by Tim, okay. Alright. Any further discussion on that before I do anything more? Okay, Linda?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay, next we have public input. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Yeah.
I wanted to talk about the comments Dean made at the last meeting before, and he's not here. And I really like to say when he's here. What we talked about was the housing in this town. That houses need to be kept up and people need to de-pride in their houses a little bit. And I don't think enough people were backing him on that. And I'm backing a hundred percent on that, because...
Excuse me. Please comment, why don't you wait just two seconds.
Okay, Jake, can you please state your name and address too when you do that? Yeah. Welcome back.
Good to be back.
Okay, now try.
Let me do this again. Chase Schmidt, seven twenty, Ridgewood, Manchester. And I want to talk about Dean and, don't get alarmed. It wasn't, I came to the meeting last meeting, it had, it was too crowded, I couldn't get in, so I just gave up. And I'm here at this meeting, Dina, you were talking about the housing, and about the rundown houses in town and this and that, and people not keeping them up, and I'm a hundred percent behind you on that. It was just excellent, it should be talking about, and I don't think the council even backed you enough. Our citizens don't back you now, because we bought how many houses, the worst one on the street, and we fixed them up. And I just want to compliment you on that, Dean. You did a real good job.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate it, and that hit our house real, real big. And I don't think we pushed enough on that, and I just thought a lot of it, and I want to let you know. And now for my next thing, about the paper. Manchester Press did not have anything in it about who's running for office, except Dean. And because that had it in, Delhi had it in, Hopkin had it in, and our own town did not have it in. So, I called Mike, and Mike said, "Well, it won't be in until the twenty-fifth." And I said, "You know, this is our town, we need to know about the election." And he said, "Well, it's gonna be in the twenty-fifth." And that isn't correct. It should, this is news, and it should be in the news right away so everybody knows it. You see how many calls we got at our house? I don't know if you people get called, but we do. And Linda doesn't have time to take those calls, so I'll talk. But nobody just has one minute. And it's not really my job or Linda's job to announce who's running for office. It should be, Connie, I'm asking you to take care of this, get it in the paper next week, so people know.
Well, actually, if I can speak to that, it's not told to me who's actually on the ballot, and it's reported to the county first, and so it's the county auditor's responsibility to get that to the press.
So, you don't think our auditor got it to the press?
I don't know, she, how's that work, my, let me do that.
I requested it from her, I got it from her. What will be in this week, what will be in Wednesday, will be a schedule of what we're running and when we're running for contested races. And it says, who's running in like what ward, what school district seat or whatever, and what week that people can expect by of the candidate.
What was in the Telegraph Herald on the twenty-eighth September?
Have you guys saw that stuff in the Telegraph Herald already?
No, we received seven requests for input.
Did you receive stuff for Telegraph Herald, anybody else?
Well, I didn't get anything from Telegraph Herald, because they don't know I'm a candidate.
Well, yeah, but what about Linda or Bill? You didn't get anything from Telegraph Herald, so they didn't even say, so they must have just been reaching out to the people who are...
A lot of times the Telegraph Herald will pick up what's in the press. That's where the story...
In the case of this, what the THATD, and that came from the Dubuque County Auditor.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's why.
Anyway, I got a lot of people thinking that the Manchester Press is dragging their feet on this, and it should come out, and it's kind of changed it. Because there's a lot of hard feelings about that.
But we don't particularly manage that information here.
But I'd like to see you as the town mayor to try and get that in the paper.
I will do my best next year to make that happen.
Appreciate that. I got one more thing. Joe has asked me to be his campaign manager, so I told him I would help him, yes. And the rumors that are going around about Joe are just outrageous. So, I'm right here to tell you tonight, Joe's a registered Republican, not a liberal. I know Joe for how many years now, and he's a decent person, he's a family man, and these rumors that are going around are just outrageous.
Very close to your time, by the way.
I'm gonna cut her short.
Okay.
And I appreciate listening to me. Anybody got a question for me?
None.
Okay.
Thank you, Jake.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public input. Before you, next we have the consent agenda, and item three point one is approval of the minutes of the September twenty-fifth regular city council meeting and the October second committee of a whole meeting. Next we have resolution eighty-six approving the bills. You'll find next, acknowledging receipt of city reports and minutes, and that's from the wastewater plant. We next have two liquor licenses to approve, one for the Delaware County Fair Board and the Franklin Street Brewery.
Question about that?
We can ask questions after we...
Okay, yeah, that's fine, okay.
The next one is, we have resolution eighty-seven amending the salary, or excuse me, that's not it. Resolution. Oh, yeah, okay, yes, we have salary resolution, yeah, for three team members here at the city. Next item is item three point six, and it's approval of temporary street closure as requested by the Manchester Area Chamber of Commerce for December seventh, the window walk. And that's the one and two hundred blocks of East Main and South Franklin Street from four thirty to eight P M, and that's for the window walk, correct?
Yes.
Our next item is item three point seven acknowledging the receipt of unpaid nuisance mowing fees and approve the certification of the Delaware County Treasurer for collection on property taxes. You'll find three properties listed there. We have resolution eighty-eight, that's formally accepting the Shelley Park renovation project. And our final item is number three point nine, and that's approving the pay estimate, the final retainage one, and the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and seven cents to Eastern Iowa Escavating and Concrete for the Shelley Park renovation project. I'm looking for a motion and second, and then we will have discussion.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Any questions?
Yes, some questions on the liquor approval?
Yes.
I know some of the forms has, Steve Shepherd is part of the ownership, but it says he's not a citizen, I think that's...
I will let you know, okay, that is an error. And I just wanted to point out on the resolution approving the bills, the listing of bills, there, there's two different ones. Linda caught it for me, thank you, Linda. When I run the expense report before Laura prints the checks, it runs two different totals at the very end. The total of all the expenditures within the total of the checks that had been written already. So, I jumped the gun, ran the report before Laura had printed out the checks on Friday, so I reran the report today. Those two columns match now, and it's the same total as was on before, but the columns match, so I just wanted to explain why that additional report was there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we are going to go into a public hearing on a proposed development agreement with Eastern Iowa Pumping, and this is for the West, is that what it's called? Westside, yes. The state is five twelve, and I am now opening a public hearing. Anybody want to speak to it?
This development agreement is a little more unique than some, isn't it, Tim? Do you want to expand on any of that?
Yeah, it really, I don't want to call it unique, it's a hybrid of what we've done with the last three development agreements. Because with this development agreement, we're talking about extending sewer product to subdivision, and then extending the sewer into subdivision water, sewer streets. In the past, what we've done, the last three development agreements we've done for residential subdivisions, it was a cost share with forgivable loan portion. So, basically, the developer expands the money to put in the improvements, we reimburse the developer, and then fifty percent of that amount was a forgivable loan. If they generated enough tax base to generate enough revenue to offset what we have as part of that loan, it's forgiven, so it's knocked off as it's being generated. So, that encourages the developer to accomplish what they tell us they're going to accomplish. In the other agreements, we did not have to extend sewer to the extent that we did on this project. But by extending the sewer we're doing that at, it gives us an opportunity to enhance or improve our industrial part of the area. That's now providing us with sewer access to an area of town, it's actually outside the sealance, but still adjacent to our industrial park, so we have that capability since we try to attract new industry. We have land that's getting closer and closer to being shovel-ready. So, that's the reason why this one isn't exactly a fifty-fifty match, or fifty-fifty, fifty percent grant, fifty percent forgivable loan. It's five hundred, excuse me, three, fifty? It's Monday. Let me pull this up here. So, two hundred thousand dollars of this is part of the forgivable loan portion. Six hundred thousand dollars is a grant, because a big chunk of that is getting the sewer from the end of Enterprise Avenue, and actually, it's closer to the front part of Strighton. We had to bore underneath Enterprise Avenue, so we don't tear up the road and have road replacement costs. Get that boring done underneath there, and then bore underneath, jack and bore underneath Highway thirteen, because they won't do an open cut there. They are doing an open cut trenching to get the sewer in along the Hulan property where it's farmland right now. So, that's, Jason, do you remember off the top, you have a long stretch that was at two thousand feet?
The board, the board piece?
The board piece was a thousand.
Thousand feet.
And then another thousand to get across...
Across the land's field, and then there's a hundred and sixty feet across the Highway thirteen right away.
So, that's a big chunk of it, just for us to be able to serve that subdivision. So, that's the part I, a little out of what was considered a grant, you know, forgivable loan portion. That way, I felt comfortable, this was an investment into future expansion, future area first developed as part of our industrial park.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? Now's the time to share.
Yeah, question from one senior from Franklin. Okay, so that's, we do some type of cost share on sewer, like by water and sewer?
Everything, water, sewer, streets.
Okay. Can you elaborate a little bit more on streets? Are we, are we cost sharing on that as well?
Yes.
Yeah. To the extent of like fifty-fifty or...
That's the forgivable loan, the two hundred thousand dollars covers the cost share for the water, sewer, street, storm sewer.
Okay.
It does not, it does not cover the developer's cost for engineering, and it does not cover stormwater. Well, stormwater management basin.
Okay.
The developer provides the property, there is also some gravel crusher rock that is already, there's already some subbase there.
Yeah, that the developer is providing for some of those streets in the backfill for the pipes in the ground, correct? But we do try to tailor these as closely as we can, each development, because these are, no development is the same. Different locations, different changes to them.
Any further comments?
Tim, do we go to the extent of, you know, doing some type of analysis where, you know, the first year we have this many properties done, you know, to the fifth or however long, and then property tax revenue is going to be, you know, estimated, you know, a year or two behind, and it's at this rate? Do we put together something like that, or...
Well, we do, and I'm going to be blunt on this one. The first six units that he's looking to build in phase one is not going to cover entire cost here. He needs to be able to get more development, more phases built out. This opens up an area for another, is it forty units, Jason?
Yeah, there's a total, yeah. So, how's he... That's all fifty-six duplex units, so that is for fifty plus or minus, how is it?
One of the challenges we have with this site is the fact it was outside the sealance, so he has to annex the end, the distance between where our sanitary sewer is to where this site is. We do have water main on Highway thirteen, we put that in a number of years ago, and we did the development with Casey's and the hotel out there. So, the water main's the easy part, unfortunately, it's a sanitary sewer. That is a huge cost, and then running the street up through there, working with Joe on doing curb gutter, and, you know, we'll be looking back and forth whether it's going to be asphalt or concrete. Unfortunately, yeah, he's not interested, or he wants to be careful with how much exposure he has as well. But he knows, he, he's got the first two units sold, and I think he can get the next four units sold within the next three years. That will help get it started and then move on to the next phase. Joe has done this with Bailey Drive, where we started off with two units each, and we've done four development agreements with him on that. On that, it was a little different, because that's a private street. He had the entire cost of the street. We did a rebate with him on that one, where a portion of property taxes that were paid were rebated back to him. And this one, because it's a cost upfront, we were doing the grant with the forgivable loan portion. After twelve years, it doesn't generate enough revenue, that portion of that two hundred thousand dollars is required to be paid back.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, it's five nineteen, I'm going to close the public hearing. And next, we're going to ask Maggie to talk to us about the financing.
All right, so we're gonna start with this colorful sheet in front of you. I'm Maggie Berger with Spearfany, I'm so, so we're gonna talk a little bit about the potential financing for the public hearing that you just held. As Tim indicated, he gave you a split of six hundred thousand and two hundred thousand, so you'll notice I say five hundred thousand and two hundred thousand. And Tim, that's because you're using a hundred thousand dollars.
Water fund, we have reserves on it.
Perfect, so, so we really only have to do a borrowing for five hundred thousand. Why we have to split these up? The forgivable loan piece will be taxable. The bonding attorney says if there is a potential that that developer will owe the city back money, that has to be taxable. If you look back in prior bond issues that we've done over the last couple of years, where these types of development agreements with forgivable loan pieces, we've done a tax-exempt piece, and we've done a taxable piece. So, that is the same as we have done recently, and again, that's a legal opinion of the bonding attorney, that there's private purpose as part of the forgivable loan piece. So, the not forgivable loan piece is the first one that you're looking at, the general obligation series twenty-two-three A. We would be able to do this, this does have a ten-year maturity. The very first year, though, that it will pay property, or that you would use any mature, any type of debt service levy would be fiscal year twenty-five. So, if we close this issuance, then you get the money anytime after December first of twenty-three. You will not have to pay interest until December first of twenty-four, which is fiscal year twenty-five. So, right now, it's not in your budget to be paying anything in fiscal year twenty-four. So, we are doing this in a way that it puts it into your budget, ahead of you budgeting, that you know that there will be parts of it that need to be shown for fiscal year twenty-five. Again, it's a ten-year maturity. We estimate interest rates could be as high as five percent on tax-exempt debt. I know, but we look back in the tip report, and there's been lots and lots of years where we've issued for a very long time at one percent and at two percent. This is just the market that we're in. We hope that that interest rate would come in a little bit less than that, again, because it's tax exempt, meaning the purchaser of this does not pay federal income tax on the amount of interest that you pay them. This one, because you are usually, this is the bulk of you getting that line, that sewer line to the property's edge. We are determined, based on your administration running the scenarios for us, seventy-three percent of this loan, here in red, will be paid on an annual basis with sewer revenues, because again, this is the portion that really is not the forgivable loan piece, and that's, so that's the bulk of your own, you know, type of grant dollars there. So, that is running that sewer line, so seventy-three percent, so in the very far two right columns, the estimated tax rate associated with what is left, which is about an estimated debt service of around seventeen to eighteen thousand a year, that's about eight cents in tax rate, and about four dollars on that one hundred thousand dollar assessed property. Two hundred thousand dollar assessed property is eight dollars. Three hundred thousand dollars is twelve dollars. So, that is what that piece of this looks like. If you flip to page two, that is the forgivable loan portion, and we've labeled it right here at the top for you. This is the two hundred thousand dollar piece. This is not, we're not using any sewer revenues, we're not using any other funds to do this. But as Tim mentioned, this is the piece that if the development does not cash flow itself, then you can request money back from the developer for reimbursement on this. This is also on a ten-year, same scenario, we did use an interest rate of five point five percent, because it is taxable. So, now that they have to pay taxes on that interest that you charge, or that you pay them, we label this the twenty-two-three B. We have the A bond, a B bond, just to kind of break that up to make sure that they're separate. This one is no, again, no additional revenues, so our estimated tax rate of this is on average twelve cents, and it's about six dollars and thirty-two cents on average for that one hundred thousand dollar house. So, between the two, on average for that hundred thousand dollar house, we're looking at somewhere just over ten dollars a year for property tax impact. If the council decides to move forward this evening, this is the proposed timeline on the very back sheet that we would propose. Today is, it is October ninth, and so October twenty-third, which is your next council meeting, we would approve a preliminary term sheet. We've discussed it with your administration, and based on the size of five hundred and two hundred thousand, we do anticipate to do a term sheet on these and send that to local banks or regional, like banks in this area. And so, October twenty-fourth, if you approve the term sheet on the twenty-third, the city would be able to send the term sheet to the local and regional banks on the twenty-fourth. We would ask then for those bid proposals from those banks by twelve noon on November ninth, that should give them plenty of time to do their credit review, their processes. And then on November twenty-seventh, it would be the bond award authorizing issuance. So, when we do a normal bond issue, we have award one night, and then two weeks later, we do authorizing. When we do bank placements, we are able to jam everything in to one night with all the resolutions, as long as the bid proposals come in a couple weeks in advance. And when you look at November ninth to November twenty-seventh, November ninth is not a date you have to meet, it's just a date on our calendars. We're giving a little bit of cushion there, because the two days leading into November twenty-seventh are holidays, right? It's the Thanksgiving holiday the week before. So, we're making sure that bond council and the Dorsey firm doesn't get mad at me or Tim and say, "You're not giving us enough time." So, we're, we're sort of working everything in. I would be able to call in or virtual into that meeting that night, just because I have to be at another meeting, because it's a Monday night. But I have to be another part of the state that evening, but that should not be a problem. And then this would mean that you would get the money on December twelfth. And I believe that, you know, as this progresses forward, you probably will have spent some of that money already. There could be one reimbursement so far by that date, so this will be good to get the money as quickly as possible. It still keeps it in calendar year twenty-two-three as well, so. Questions about any of that?
Anybody or...
Just the council? Do you anticipate that by going to local banks, we will get a better rate than if we took it out? I know you're...
That's like a million dollar question right now. Interest rates sort of rallied last week, meaning they got a little bit higher in the market. I think this, because it's a local project with a local developer, you may get a better interest rate just at that bank level. It does save you some cost of issuance. If we go full-fledged official statement, we probably would not be able to just borrow at seven hundred thousand. We'd probably be in the seven twenty-five range between the two of them, and just because for our office to do a little bit more paperwork, Dorsey to do a little bit more paperwork, registrar and paying agent, and there's a few other things that go along with that. So, this way, we're trying to save a little bit of money on cost of issuance. We know also that your local banks would be able to take five hundred and two hundred thousand. When we start to get in that million dollar range, that's a lot, because banks are limited with their own banking authorities as to how much public debt that they can have on their books. So, people don't think about that, they can have all the private debt with all of us and our mortgages and home loans and personal loans and car loans. They are limited, because it has to be collateralized a different way, because it's public debt. So, these five hundred and two hundred thousand dollar amounts should not be a problem for them, and they have been good to us, and I do think we'll get to see some good interest rates. We've got another one going out in Delaware County, probably a week and a half to two weeks before you guys, so we're gonna feel from that as well, for that.
Many times when we do the larger issuance, it's the local banks jump on with...
Correct.
Larger banks, so they do like the city...
Correct, city. They do, so, yeah, when we, that's, that's a very good point. So, when we do a larger issuance of a million, a million and a half, as we've done in the past and in certain years for the city, underwriters are typically who are buying that, right? It's, it's a bigger amount of money that you've got to come up with. Typically, your local banks, two to three of the local banks are typically participating with those underwriters, meaning that they're gonna buy some of it. Again, they probably can't buy the whole million or a million and a half, but they can buy five hundred thousand or two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand. So, again, that makes it a little bit more lucrative to them at this size. Yeah.
Thank you.
Just, I'm just gonna do this real quick. I'm just, do you have a question, I want to let you ask the question?
I'm impressed by, okay, so this is what we just talked about with Hillbrand, the five hundred and the two hundred thousand, right? And so, you've got it broke down to like, for this initiative, everybody's property taxes are gonna go up by just per hundred thousand.
Per hundred thousand dollars a house.
Initiative.
Correct. And this is based, I want to say this, though, this is based on today's taxable rate. The initiative brings new taxable rate, correct? So, that should go down. That's a very good question, that should go down, the impact should go down as new houses come on. So, as these new twin homes, duplexes, whatever we're calling them, as those come on, they increase the taxable valuation of your property. We assume the taxable valuation is going up in fiscal year twenty-five. We all got letters from the county stating that our assessed valuation is going up. I do not know what the rollback number is for the property for residential. I do not know what the rollback number is for um the property for for residential. We have some ideas. Upper forties is what we're hearing is at fifty-four percent right now, meaning everyone will pay less property taxes on their home's value. But their home's value will be going up. So I, I mean, it will be interesting. Correct. It'll be interesting to run this with twenty-five's valuation in here. And then to rerun this in twenty-six and twenty-seven as those new property valuations of those duplexes come on. Because it really could get very, very small. I mean, you know, we're talking ten dollars per hundred thousand dollars. It could get down to six dollars. Five dollars, anything like that as that new valuation comes on.
Any other questions to Maggie? All right. Next we have item resolution eighty-nine. I'm looking for a motion to approve the development agreement with Eastern Iowa. Incorporated for the West Side Estate Subdivision.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Any further questions or comments?
I just want to say it's exciting to see more.
Everybody's begging for it. Everybody's begging for it. And we were landlocked, so not without annexing. And it's being done. Exactly, exactly. Bill?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Linda?
Yeah.
And uh, area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Maggie, we're gonna ask you to stand up again.
I promise this is it. So it's that time of the year, it's our annual tip report. So this is your colorful packet. We start with the red pages. So this does not include the items that we just talked about. So we will update those sheets and get them back to you. Once this is all done and we have final interest rates and and things like that, we'll, we will get these sheets back to you that so that Erin can put them into your package. Your electronic packets for you. Um, we start out with the red portion, which is the general obligation debt. I remind you, this outlines any general obligation that that the city has outstanding. Um, general obligation can be paid with property taxes, doesn't have to be paid with property taxes. In the box of these header boxes, we'll just look at the twenty fourteen, that first one. We give you the year that it was issued, the amount that it was issued, the date that it was issued. The TIC is the true interest cost, meaning the true interest rate associated. So as I said, we're in the one point eight, one point six, two, two. Um, then we give you principal, we give you principal and interest. These first three issuances, fourteen, fifteen, A and fifteen B. Are callable, meaning that you could pay them off early. You could refinance them. We can't refinance them. There's no interest rate savings there. Um, but they are to the point where the investors have said, okay, you've paid us enough. If you want to do something different, you can do that.
Which ones again?
Uh, these first three where it says callable above the word principal. Otherwise, when we get to the twenty seventeen, we've got an underline under the June first of twenty-four payment. That's when that becomes callable. So the underline in all the rest of them on page two and going on to then page three, that's when those are callable. Um, is at that point in time. So uh, the call date is usually associated um with how the length of the issuance. So we are analyzing the market all the time. Usually on a ten or an eleven year bond, you can call them after six or seven years. Um, usually on a, you know, twelve to twenty year bond, you can call them after eight, nine years. Because they, they are investments uh to underwriters. They want to know that they're gonna hold that investment and get interest paid from you for a certain amount of time. Page three says our total principal is about six million eight hundred thousand. Total principal and interest is there. And then these are all the ways that you've paid the debt now and in the past. So TIP revenue is in the yellow column. You use some franchise fees for the twenty twenty-one B. You use some water revenue, you sewer revenue, and you use some road use tax revenue. Those are all conversations that we have when you go to issue the debt, just like the seventy-three percent of sewer that we noted. Those will get to show up on this to say the portion of this debt is going to be paid with this type of a revenue. Um, so that breaks it down. We do note that then we've drawn the arrow to fiscal year twenty-five. That's the next debt service levy that you'll be putting together um at about six hundred and ninety-two thousand eighty dollars is is what our estimate is.
And we'll probably go up a little bit with the eight hundred thousand.
Correct. It should go up just a, it should go up just a little bit because not all of it will be paid with debt service. But some of it will be paid with that service. Yep, so good point. Uh, then we go on to the revenue debt, which is the orange page. The city does have two um outstanding revenue debts, one from two thousand and eight for sewer revenue. And one from two thousand and nineteen from water revenue. So as I think I was here for your committee of the whole meeting, we had a discussion that this is wrapping up and we're happy to see this debt wrapping up in the next few years. Because we do anticipate that you probably have some um significant sewer um projects coming down the road. And so again, our whole goal is when you finance these, and these were both done with the SRF, so they're at two percent interest rates. When you finance these projects, that we do it in a useful way, meaning that by the time the life of that facility or needing. Major improvements comes along, you've got the majority of that debt paid off. So um, just a quick update on that, the interest rates, you are fixed at the two percent interest rate. Today's interest rate as of October first with the SRF for tax exempt twenty years is three oh nine. They have gone to an increase in interest rates just due to the increase in them borrowing money to be able to lend back out to you. Um, we're happy with that interest rate. Um, there were conversations this summer that it could be three point five, four percent. So to have it come in at three oh nine, it will adjust quarterly and it's tied to an index. Um, and so that index has been pretty flat lately. So we're pretty happy to see and and we really do anticipate that's gonna get much more. At about three twenty-five or three oh, uh, three fifty. So still, it will be the cheapest way to borrow revenue monies. Um, because revenue debt does not count against your debt capacity. So you, you are restricted.
That a little bit for people because I think people forget about that.
Correct.
So revenue debt does not count against our debt capacity.
If we do revenue debt for water and sewer projects and we use the revenues of the system and we do not use general obligation debt. You do not have to count the debt against your debt capacity because you are tying that to not a property tax. You cannot use property taxes for it. You can only use the net revenues of the system. But what you are tying it to is that you will keep the revenues of the system in a place that not only pays the annual operating expenses. But also pays the debt and has a little bit of cushion. So there's this ten percent cushion, meaning you have revenues. You subtract off the operating expenses, you subtract off the debt, and there still has to be about ten percent of what that debt payment is. Leftover. There's just gotta be a little, and that's because you could have a year where everybody in town doesn't want to pay their water bill or every, you know. Or we have like a year where it rains a lot and then people don't water their lawns and they don't use as much water. There's gotta be this like cushion there because it's all based on the revenues. But because you signed that resolution of staying, it will only be the revenues. That is what makes it not general obligation debt. And it cannot count against your debt capacity.
And that's list for our sewer. When we redid the sewer and out here.
On the fund balance reports, you'll see um of water cap, um debt service and a sewer debt service. And that is where we hold our hundred, it's basically a hundred and ten percent.
Correct.
One year's payment. So those um funds carry a balance, but I'm required to keep that balance in there to make the payment for the SRF agreements. And SRF is state revolving.
But fund. Correct. It is the lowest cost financing. Well, I can run you a million schedules. And every time it works out to still be the lowest cost financing mechanism.
Right.
For water and sewer projects, not expansion. So let's, let's be real careful when we talk about that. So what we just talked about tonight, you cannot use the SRF for expansion. But you can replace existing failing um things that have been here for fifty and sixty years. It's, it's to improve water quality in the state of Iowa.
Right.
So.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So then we go on to our purple pages and this is our rebate obligations. Um, we talk here and a rebate is exactly what Tim explained in the first part of the meeting. Where you've entered into a TIF rebate agreement with a developer and they're going to build something. I think we talked about it for daily drive. And then you're gonna rebate back TIF dollars based on the new property taxes that they have paid. So meaning they'll pay those new property taxes or the people that occupy those homes will pay the new property taxes. You will rebate back to the developer, to the developer, not to the homeowner, those property taxes. And why it goes to the developer is that the developers who put the risk into the, to the development, right? They ran the water, the sewer, the roads. They did the development and and took that risk. So we've got a couple pages here um of rebate agreements and then, actually we have three pages of rebate agreements. I like rebate agreements. To me, a rebate agreement is a very safe and uh way for the city to work with a developer. Especially given the different developments that you've had in the past. Total, they're all annually appropriated also, which means we only have to count the amount of one year's rebate agreements. Against the debt um capacity and not the whole amount. If we had to count the whole amount, we're looking at on page four, three point seven million dollars against your debt capacity. Because you write the language in there legally that says annually, we appropriate this. You do that in November typically. Um, it's two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred dollars that we have to count against that capacity in twenty twenty-four and that's that top line amount. So, so those rebate agreements are good. They're safe. If something happens, the developer does not pay their taxes. You do not rebate money back to them. There are clauses in those rebate agreements that says if the property gets sold, typically the city can. They can void out that rebate agreement or they can determine that they're going to transfer that rebate agreement. Because maybe somebody is going to go in and do some further improvements or continue to keep that business in the way that that business was originally agreed to. Um, with all of you.
And they all have a not to exceed amount. So when, when they are developed in that development agreement, it says that you will get rebate payments for ten years. Unless, you know, not to exceed four hundred thousand. So if they hit that four hundred thousand dollars before and you're set.
So they build something that's valued more than what we thought you asked about doing calculations. Those are the calculations we do. Like we think it'll be this, but if the valuation goes up, like things are gonna go up, some of these rebate agreements could be off a little bit earlier.
Yep. And the same if they don't hit the four hundred thousand dollars until the ten years is run, they're done. It doesn't go until they get.
I think it's important to note that we didn't have housing developments before we started doing that. That's really stimulated the housing growth that what started it. And it was controversial when we did that. Because when you do a housing development, you take on responsibility for fire protection, police protection and and expenses to the city. And you're only getting twenty percent of the tax in some cases. You know, that was an issue we had to struggle with to figure this out. But yet I was in favor of doing those agreements because if you don't do those agreements, you, you never get that development to go. And you never get any of the taxes. Where we talked about the Dyersville thing in our previous meeting where they've got TIF agreements. Where the city of Dyersville is capturing that money. But the county's still getting its level of taxes and like Farm Tech probably doesn't have any TIF agreements unless they've had some new ones.
And yeah, theirs, theirs are gone.
Theirs are gone. They're, hundred percent of their taxes probably coming in. So you have to think long term, down the road. It's not about next year. It's about.
Correct. Yeah. And again, you would, you're not the only one offering incentives. Um, we have.
That's why we had to do it.
I would say the majority of cities your size, especially in the eastern Iowa, the section of eastern Iowa. Um, they're all offering incentives, whether that is housing and or commercial slash light industrial. And so it's pretty common.
Especially in small towns.
Right, especially small towns because you're competing with all these other communities um to get people in and to do housing especially. And and a lot of our small towns find that there's a how, there's definitely a housing need. I, I don't know that I've walked into any towns your size that haven't said. We have a housing need.
It's a topic at the Iowa League of Cities. Every year for probably the last, what, five to seven years, it's been a topic. Yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, so everything is functioning and Erin, she has a lot of calculations to do. So at this time of the year, everybody think Erin because she does do a lot of calculations. So she has to keep track of all of those. Um, and make sure that, you know, she's checking tax rates, she's checking tax, um, the, the tax uh levy rate that you guys can do for TIF. Things like that. So there's just a lot that goes into that.
And just to note our development agreements, they haven't all been housing. There's several that are for commercial developments as well. So it's a tool, tool for both.
Right, right. Yeah. So our yellow pages then, this outlines any re, any geo debt. So the red pages are our geo debt. Any geo debt that's being paid with TIF revenues. So if a portion of a geo debt, all that geo debt is being paid, and again, that's a determination we make upfront with your administration and your bonding attorney. They help you with those urban renewal plans. They write those um, those plans to say, yes, this does make economic development sense. And that's, we're gonna pay a portion of that debt with TIF receipts. So we've got those breakdowns for you. Again, those are the amount that are paid. We've got a couple forgivable loan, um, or we've got a forgivable loan piece in there um for boulders uh or cobblestone. And then we have the last year in fiscal year twenty-two or twenty-four is your Delaware County Economic Development Grant. So that was a three-year agreement where you gave them thirty thousand dollars, I think, a year. Um, and then we bring in those in uh rebate agreements in the purple column. Because ultimately, your, your administration wants to know, well, how much do I have to ask for a TIF receipt? You know, we, we try to give this, the whole point of this report is not only to educate you, but to make it much easier for Erin and Tim. When they're asking the county and making sure that we're all crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and that we're not missing something, right? This is a double check to say, well, this, do your records meet our records? And we've got everything here and then we turn it into the county. The county knows exactly what you're asking for, which in two thousand and twelve was sort of a change in the TIF law. Um, before two thousand and twelve, people were told we'd just write a number on a sheet and fax it to the county and I'm like. You know, we, we, we think it should be broken down and shown what you're doing with that. And so um, actually the, the law change in two thousand and twelve just kind of said, you've got to kind of break it down and do this. And we were already doing that for the city, but it's important that you all can see that, um, what's going on there. So we draw that arrow to fiscal year twenty-five because again, that's the number that we need to get to or above. Sometimes we tell her to round that number up um so that you are asking for that amount this November. Before you even start a budget project or project. So let's talk about the green pages. This is debt capacity. So as we're talking about revenue debt not counting against your debt capacity. This is what we were talking about. We're gonna look at column number two. Column number one is just there for a year of history. Column number two is fiscal year twenty-four. You've got four hundred and seven million dollars in actual property valuation. All over the city, that's what everything is actually valued at, not taxable. Um, column number three, just so you know, you grew by three percent last year. We built in a growth rate of two percent. We know that fiscal year twenty-five is gonna be a much higher number. So we're not gonna say, oh, you're gonna grow by ten or fifteen percent every year. That'll be kind of a one-year fluke. Um, because of those property tax increase statements that everyone got. And then we'll probably put you back into that two percent range of of growth in the future. Going right down column number two, the statutory debt limit. So the uh, the state of Iowa says you can borrow against five percent. Of your one hundred percent value. That means um twenty million, three hundred and sixty-one thousand is what you can borrow against. You have six point eight million dollars bar only principal. Go to the red page and there's a line drawn to total principal. And that's where that number comes from, the six point eight million dollars. Only principal is what you have to count. We've got those rebate agreements and just the annual amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred dollars for twenty-four. And you will pay back principal in this coming, in this fiscal year that we're in of one million, one hundred and sixty. So ultimately, at the end of the fiscal year, you have fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of debt capacity remaining, which is seventy-two percent. Of your total debt capacity. So you're only borrowed against about three, thirty percent of that debt capacity. Um, we tell most of our cities, you should never borrow more than eighty percent um of your debt capacity, leaving twenty percent there as a cushion. Um, in case of an emergency. So we deduct off four million dollars, which is that twenty percent off the top. You have down here at the bottom, ten million, six hundred and forty-five, forty-nine thousand dollars of remaining debt asking or fifty-two point three percent. Typically, you ask me the questions, I'll answer it right away.
And what was that question? What is that question, Maggie? How?
How do you compare to others? So um, we just, we, again, this is the TIF time of the year.
Right.
So we're delivering, I would say, um, the majority of our cities are more indebted um at your size. Than the fifty, you know, they don't have fifty uh two percent remaining. A lot of them have forty-two, fifty percent remaining. But you guys have a little bit less debt um from the general obligation side than the majority of cities. Do I think that you're over extended? Absolutely not. Ten million is is a great amount. And it's been a while, you know, I mean, we were only at eight point nine million. But again, as you continue to grow your city and you grow valuation off of developments. And things like that, that's what grows the actual valuation. That's what grows and gives you more debt capacity um as you go forward.
Did the state lower our debt limit last year or does that come at next year? Did they lower the amount of?
They did not lower any kind of a debt limit.
Talk about changing the amount we could or what our debt limits were.
Yes. So that's how file seven eighteen, it lowers the revenues that you need to take in as your part of your budget. So they did not mess with the debt capacity in, in thirty, forty years. So debt capacity and what you can borrow against is um still available to you at five percent. It's the new house file seven eighteen and I'm gonna let Tim and Erin go forward into detail on that. But that has to do with your budget and the levies that you get to levy against.
The massive follow-up.
Yes, this is the one thing they did.
Shoe that hasn't dropped.
Yep.
That's correct.
Yeah, this is the one thing they didn't mess with is debt capacity, which we're happy about. Yeah. Um, so this goes on for a couple pages and just kind of gives you a projection going forward so that you can see that, you know, by year eleven or by column number eleven. Um, you know, as, as debt comes and goes, you know, you're really out of debt at that point in time. Um, you know, we know that there will be other debt coming on through the years, but I will say this also. Um, part of the reason that you are in a healthy debt capacity is you're very strict to your debt repayment. So it seems aggressive at times, but ten to twelve years of debt repayment is our favorite, especially on roads and, and doing these projects. If you can pay them off in ten to twelve years, it really does gain you that debt capacity back a lot sooner. Um, and, and it's very much, um, you know, when we were talking about this, this new project, it was very clear, ten years. It's gonna pay back in ten years and that's okay. That's what I wanna hear. I don't really wanna take it out fifteen years if I don't have to.
We don't wanna hold future councils to our mistake.
It also helps the grade too.
It does. Absolutely, absolutely. Rate is, it's way better if you can keep that in that ten to twelve year from an interest rate perspective. So the last page is just our TIF report page. This is column number two again, because that's fiscal year twenty-four. So I'm gonna walk up to your table. This is your base value of your TIF area. Everything on this table is base value. Anything that grows over and above the table is increment. That is what TIF is. You have to have something grow. Houses have to grow, buildings have to grow. So this is all of the increment in all of your TIF districts citywide. That has grown from the inception. So we have sixty-four million dollars of growth in commercial in column number two. Thirteen million dollars of growth in industrial. There's about nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand of personal property or agriculture. Um, residential is ninety million dollars. I wanna point out that there is no more of multi-residential classification. So if you look at residential and multi-residential in column one, they were eighty million and four point nine million. They have merged into the residential category. So they're at ninety million, but that still means. You grew the residential by over five million dollars or about four and a half million dollars. So that's fantastic. Um, that leaves you a total property taxable valuation of a hundred and twenty million at your TIF tax rate of thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. Remember, that's that tax rate that doesn't include the levies that are protected, that you can't TIF against. Um, that produces about three million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a year. You're using three hundred and twenty-eight thousand for debt service purposes. You're using about two hundred and ninety-five thousand for TIF rebates. Um, and then you're using about forty-one thousand for other loans and incentives, which are those uh, the forgivable loan to Cobblestone. Um, as well as that Delaware County incentive. So you do not use all of your TIF dollars. I'm not telling you to go claim those TIF dollars, because if you do claim those TIF dollars, you will sink your budget. But what I think is important for you to see that you're not claiming all those TIF dollars is there is growth every single year. And you're not using those um exorbitantly, meaning that there's money flowing back into the budgets of the county and the school district. And the city, and you're, you're seeing that growth by not using all of those TIF dollars. A lot of information short of our time.
You always do such a beautiful job of explaining, so thank you, we appreciate that. Questions to Maggie? So, next we have item six point three. I believe this is just for your six point two we just did, right? Cause I'm, or we did six point two already. So six point three, um, you have a list in front of you, it's just discussion information. I believe there was several properties that Tim has given to you, I think thirty-one properties is what I counted. Am I correct? That he's working with with nuisance property updates and things are where they're at.
Or did you want to talk about what you have going on?
Okay, we've got a few updates. Uh, three oh five Lincoln Street, talk with Tim Himes. Sounds like that one is cleaned up, so have to dismiss that one at the. Property owners' cost, four twenty South Madison Street. Uh, city has permission to go in and abate and assess the cost pretty much anytime city staff can do that. Three oh eight Lincoln Street. As of last week, the owners were found in default. Basically, they didn't drop to say anything about the. Citation that was the issue. They've got a couple of months to pay the civil penalty and. Get it cleaned up, otherwise the city will have permission going to do it that itself now. After that, we've got four cases going for abandoned houses, which basically those are. Similar to nuisances except for nobody's in them that we can tell. Uh, as of right now, we've got one oh eight Gay Street, seven twenty-five East Main, four oh eight Kane Street. One thousand and one Sherman Avenue. All of these, we've got petitions for abandoned buildings filed. Notices sent out September twenty-ninth, we can do those certified mail. Fortunately, we don't have to run down some LLC. Idaho of all places. Basically, the ultimate goal is. That either somebody will come out of the woodwork and actually. Try to get these fixed up, but then more likely the city will end up coming out of these, basically as the owners of the. Of the properties at that point, usually you can. Find maybe some interested developers who are willing to do tear down and build something acceptable on those lots.
Is there any way, instead of the city just assuming we're gonna end up owning it, is there any way we can put a. Some sort of process in there to let developers know this property is abandoned? So somebody could buy it, do it on their own. A lot of times, I mean, the city comes in and buys it and with the intent of tearing it down and maybe a developer would love to have that lot and they could get it for.
Yeah.
Low fee.
Possibly what you've even got going on with this one oh eight Gay Street, this LLC in Idaho, as far as I could tell. Signed a mortgage with the prior owner. I don't think they actually paid anything for it. Would be my guess is how they could justify. Doing that, but they've also, and we talked to the neighbor across the street who was curious what Tim and I were doing over there then. And so, you know, they came, they started doing some work and they haven't been back in months and the interior has gotten enough that's been happening, so.
Looks like it's got new windows, they've done some work in it. I think it's just one of these things, I know the city doesn't wanna get into the real estate business. That, that's the tricky part of this.
Yeah.
But if we could, if we could somehow make it public, this house is, is on the auction block, we'd like to have it auctioned before we take it.
Yeah, until the city goes through with this, we've got no real say on that. They're not abandoned without that judicial order.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to make, I mean, how many people, how many developers know about this owner in Idaho? I mean. If there was a way they could come and ask, who are you talking to? I wanna talk to them.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if, if people are interested, they could probably do what. This place in Idaho probably did, which is just approach the prior owner and see if they're willing to sell, but that's, you know, two private. Entities doing their own thing, the city wouldn't be able to facilitate that.
We've got good luck selling the lots that we've had to acquire in the past, getting rid of them, the West Howard Lot. Was the other one, Brewer Street. With some contingencies put in there too, then that requires a certain amount of development being done.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that's something I usually like to see is some requirement that there will be. Tear down, there will be a new house put there, so it's not just an empty lot for years.
Can we put timeframes on that then too or not? If, with, if we were to do that, you could put a timeframe on it. Okay, I'm sorry, Linda.
Well, I have a question. Um, say this property assessed about fifty thousand dollars. Is that what we would, if we got initially paid for that?
No.
How do we figure that out?
Now, uh, assuming we're successful with these petitions, the city won't actually have to pay anything for them. And that's part of why we also have to notify like anybody with mortgage, for example, is to say we'll get these and their debts are.
Wiped away.
Wiped away. We, we get a free and clear of any weeds in the conferences, so the city gets it for pretty cheap, but. That's probably good because they're not worth a lot right now.
That's where O'Leary got a whole bunch of them free, but they had to pay the cost to have.
Demolition.
Demolition.
Right, right.
Yeah, O'Leary had to pay for thirty houses.
Yeah, some of the smaller towns, we don't get as ambitious as doing the demolition themselves, but they'll. An interested developer will have that as part of their purchase agreement and, you know, maybe factor the selling price accordingly with the work they're gonna have to do.
And the nice thing about it is if it can get redeveloped for not putting in a street and everything else. Already got all that hookup and stuff there. That's why it's true. Would be really nice with a lot of, there's several properties around town, I know that would. Be enhanced by that. Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Said, how's that business down on Main Street for the insurance office that I mentioned at the last time we talked about this? It's got weeds growing up in front of the building and a window that's getting ready to fall out and they've been contacted about fixing that.
The information was passed on to Tim Himes. I, I had not heard specifically from Tim, what are you talking about?
That's one that needs to get on our list to get dealt with.
I'm assuming Tim is, I know, I know assumptions are, but Tim Himes is well aware of it. Okay.
I think we do. Okay, any other questions for RJ? Thank you for the update, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, before I go on to engineering updates, um, I'm gonna give. Our students an opportunity, I believe they have to ask a question.
Yeah.
Who wants to go first?
Um, I can go. So, going back to the consent agenda. Uh, so what exactly are they doing to the Shirley Park?
Basically, uh, what you see up there, a map on the wall there, we, uh, we. Uh, enhance the walkway through there and make it ADA compliant, we put some new staircases in there. Uh, the shade structure will be installed once we get the, uh, well, we don't put the shade up. But what we have, some of the veins we have to install yet on that, but that's outside the scope of what Eastern Iowa put together. But we did renovate that park so it was more ADA compliant and open space. Uh, and updated the retaining walls and gardens area, gardens.
And sidewalks that were breaking down.
And sidewalks.
And stairs.
Um, how exactly is it gonna keep the houses like up to form after you get them to clean them up?
It's a constant battle. It's a constant thing. That will be going on, well, forever probably. Everybody has a different idea about. What's good and what's acceptable and, you know, we just wanna make sure all of our neighborhoods look nice and um. It doesn't devalue from their neighbors' properties, so that's our goal. Sometimes just taking the first step and mentioning something to them, hey, it's being watched, it's being noticed. We'll get them to act and then their neighbors are like, oh, they got contacted, maybe we should do a little, you know, so the word gets around. And we do have things about what can be in your, how long things can be sitting outside your yard and. What should be on your front porch and what shouldn't be and stuff like that, but sometimes people just have to be reminded, especially if they just moved into town and they don't know. So.
When say they don't clean up their yard, do they get like a decent fine or does somebody come in and clean that up?
That's what I was just talking about.
Yeah, the city code does committed the imposition of a, a penalty for that financial one and. Sometimes if it drags on, they still don't get it uh cleaned up. That's what I was mentioning, that the city could come in and fix it themselves and. That can add up because now you're essentially paying city employees for their time to mow your lawn or what have you. Uh, so it can happen um both ways really.
And that can be assessed back to their city taxes, correct? Yes. Those are good questions, Maggie. Very good. Hope you learned a lot today. Okay. Um, for Grant's not here today and so Jason, we're gonna go ahead and go to you first.
Um, slowly on getting a meeting set up with the fair board that have discussions regarding. The exception of Grand Avenue, JD is supposed to get back to me with the proposed meeting date as part of the regular meeting, so it could be the sole item that. Tim and I go up there, maybe somebody else will see how that, how that progresses, we'll let you know once we have that meeting established. Um, gonna get with uh Tim here in the next couple of days to get the, we're gonna request reports out, have those quotes back for that sewer lateral. On West Marion Street before the next council meeting. So you've got something to look at at the next council meeting on that. Um, it will also be um closing out a couple of the projects that are out there tonight. Called, talked last week, in the last week, so um close out the contract via the web ones, still some ongoing maintenance, but we can, all the seating and everything's. Though we can close that portion out as far as the retainage goes, as well as the library and lift stations. I think we finally have some closed, so the items that were open, those lift stations for. So we get all those closed out.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you. RJ, anything else you wanna share with us tonight?
Nothing else.
Okay. Tim?
Uh, October twenty-fifth, it's a Wednesday. Uh, we will be having a meeting with property owners that are impacted by. Twenty twenty-four street improvement project letters will be going out this week to provide them a notice, we'll be at the fire station. Um, we are finalizing easements that we need, hoping to catch a number of people, property owners at that meeting for temporary easements. The temporary easements that we do need will be meeting one on one with the property owners, but talk to them about those permanent easements as well.
And what time again did you say? I'm sorry.
I think it's six o'clock. It'll be six to eight.
Anything else?
Um, I would like to get a personnel committee meeting together, uh, if there's some times that would work for personnel committee. Either Sat- the Saturday or next Saturday. Or if you want during the week.
Not this Saturday, I've got my, we're going to my family's stuff.
Okay.
Next, I'm out of town. Are you out of town this Saturday?
Do you wanna go to a weekday?
If we could, that would be great.
I'd go on that, you three?
These two.
Yeah, I, I can do it uh Wednesday night. Or Tuesday night.
This Wednesday night? Which one? This or next week?
Uh, I can do this week.
This week would be better, next week. You can't do anything this week.
Next week would be the eighteenth. Does that work? You wanna do five? Or?
I can't do the eighteenth.
You can do the eighteenth.
I have a medical procedure that day.
Yeah.
Would Tuesday night work? Tuesday night? I'll schedule Tuesday. Oh, you still bop them? All the weather's still good, we're trying.
All right.
We'll discuss after here, figure out something. Okay.
There'll be snow on the ground, it'll be done.
They said a freeze warning or freeze, didn't they say this week?
So, I heard that uh late thick of the story on, uh, it seems to be doing well. Uh, we've got stuff. Department that are, are working on, uh, will be beginning winterizing parks here before too long as well, especially with the weather dipping down. Still waiting for the gentleman to come back to do the test on the pool, see if we can figure out where the leaks are at. Um, but uh, yeah, we're, we're getting to winterizing mode now.
Questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim. Erin?
Uh, just mention it for those present, I'm going to Iowa Municipal Finance Officers meeting next week. That's a gathering of city clerk's finance officers throughout the state of Iowa. We meet twice a year down in Des Moines. This year, this conference again, October, we have thirty-seven uh first timers, new, new clerks. So that's over fifty this year and we're continually seeing that, so it is an area that is um. There's some nice careers in it if you ever wanna look into it.
Get your accounting classes. Anything else, Erin?
Nothing.
Okay, Bill?
Uh, nothing.
Mary Ann?
Nothing.
Tammy? Nothing.
I noticed coming into town that they seeded the, Hyder seeded the area around the gazebo up on North Frankel.
Oh, yeah. Uh, we're still waiting for the caps to come in to put those on top there, we have four trees that are being, will be planted up there. Uh, trying to wait for us to get a little bit rain, so I don't know if they'll plant them this week or not with moderate raining this week. Uh, the direction board over there, the water and electrical to the gazebo will get those hooked up eventually. Um, as we plan for the winter of next year.
The benches are in, starting to look pretty nice.
Linda, I don't have anything tonight, so with that, I motion for Linda, second from Dean.
To adjourn and we are adjourned, thank you everybody for coming.